All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December 12, 2022 City Council meeting. I am Mayor Ross, and tonight's City Council meeting is being brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom, and tonight's recording will be posted on the City's YouTube channel, so welcome to everyone, thank you for joining. City Council Dean, please hold your role.
Councilmember Benton?
Here.
Councilmember Watten?
Here.
Councilmember Holloway? Councilmember Vehu? Councilmember Lefay?
Here.
Councilmember Christiansen? Here. Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
And Mayor Ross?
I am here. And Councilmembers Holloway and members who may give us to be excused from tonight's meeting, we're motion to excuse councilmembers. So.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Christiansen, seconded by Councilor Lefay to excuse both councilmembers in a discussion. Dana, I'll face the eye. Our opposed name. We're both excused. Thank you, Councilor Dean. So would you please stand and join me saying this, such as please, Councilmember Johnson, would you please read this? Now, our first item would be regular business to approve the agenda. We have motion, we have motion to approve the agendas.
So move.
Moved by Councilor One, seconded by Councilor Christiansen to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Dana, I'll face the eye.
I'm here.
Opposed name? We have the absence and. Next thing is the appointment of appointment and reappointment of members to the Salary Commission, and I recommend the appointment of Graham Ross, position number two, Jennifer Brad, position number three, and reappointment of Michael Ersmann to position number one. Mr. Ersmann served on the 2020 Salary Commission. Mr. Ross currently serves on the Civil Service Commission, and Ms. Brad currently serves on the Human Services Commission, and I will state, as I stated initially, that Mr. Ross joined the Service Commission that we are not related. Council, is there a motion to confirm the mayor's invitation to appoint Graham Ross, Jennifer Brad, and reappoint Michael Ersmann to the Silverly Commission? Sold?
Second.
Moved by Councilor Christiansen, seconded by Councilor Watten. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, I'll face the eye.
I'm here.
Opposed name? Right unanimous that they are appointed to the Salary Commission, and appreciate each of you for your willing us to serve, and all three of us join us tonight, and so you can either wave or just go and say a few words to them, too. Thank you very much. Next is the presentation by City Administrator Sarline on the Cities of Snoqualmie's Top Ten Accomplishments in Miles since 2022.
Well, good evening, Your Honor, and members of the City Council. What we'd like to do this evening is start a new tradition, and that is that every December, we take a look back at the year that was and talk about the things that we accomplished this year. So often, when you're kind of in the middle of it, it's hard to realize just how much you're able to accomplish. So, but further, a minute further review, let me just jump right into it. Number one. Of course, you've got to change this one in here. Number one is the $5 million we received from the state for the Snoqualmie Parkway Rehab Project with an ode to "Show Me the Money" from one of my all-time favorite movies. This was a huge team effort, guys, by current and former City Council members, current and former mayors, current and former city staff, something a lot of people have worked, have their fingerprints all over. I think it's a shiny example of what we can do when we work together, and we all have one priority. So congratulations to everybody who, over the years, has made this one successful. Number two. In addition to snow removal, our Public Works Department has had an incredible year. Just to highlight a couple of the projects they completed, they got the downtown infrastructure finished with the trees, and also we replaced hundreds of sidewalks all over the city, and we got the general sewer plan down. Number three. There's another huge project that has been, over many years, by many City Councils and many mayors, several mayors, to make it a success. Not only did we get the plant, commercial industrial plant approved, but we also got new affordable housing units included, and our city attorney, Bob, worked through the environmental impact statement issues with the hearings exam. Number four. You know, back at our March City Council retreat, we said that our finance department had three big goals. Number one, they were going to get the budget done. Number two, they were going to get the capital plan done. And number three, they were going to get the financial policies completed. We also described this as driving a car down I-90 at 70 miles an hour and trying to change the tire. I think when people, when we first brought this up, I got some serious eye rolls from people that we were going to be able to accomplish it by the end of the year. Well, thanks to Jen, Drew, and the entire finance team, we were able to pull it off. So congratulations, guys, we really appreciate it. Number five. Speaking of changing the tires driving down the freeway, our human resources team managed to fill 33 regular positions and six volunteer firefighter positions. That's a third of our entire staff, guys, including yours truly. So kudos to our HR team for the work that they did this year. Number six. Our community development team has also been very busy. Two of their biggest projects they've been working on recently was getting the recertification of the community rating system through FEMA, resolving a potential reduction in fees for flood insurance to everybody in the community, and also they got the MOU completed for the Model Train Music. By the way, the Community Development Department is also in charge of all of our special events, so the Art and Wine Walks, the Big Truck Day, the Easter Egg Hunt. By the way, our Easter Egg Hunt is much better than a lot of other cities' Easter Egg Hunts, because we've got a bunny. They got the movies and music in the park done, the chalk block, and also you'll enjoy it if you're out there tonight, the winter lights. Number seven, our police department. Huge thank you to the chief and his staff. We've hired seven new officers this year, a captain, and brought in our mental health professional, who, for confidentiality reasons, obviously, we can't give you too many details, but she's already making a huge positive impact in the community. It's been a huge change for the good. Number eight, our information technology department. They rolled out the Dark Tray Security System. They've worked on getting the conference rooms, the council chambers outfitted for Zoom, and we're still, you know, we're trying to finally complete a transition from virtual desktops to laptop computers. Number nine, our fire department. They maintained their accredited status. That's only three words, but it represents a huge amount of effort and a huge commitment by the department. And I know the chief's talked with you about this in the past, but I just want to echo what he has said, that there are very few accredited departments in the country, let alone the state, and it's a huge honor to work for a city that has an accredited fire department. Also, we'd just note that they responded to over 1,500 calls this year. To put that in context, that's the largest number of calls they've ever had in one year in the city's history. So our fire department's been really good. And last, and certainly not least, number 10. We have secured funding of $9.5 million this year to support city projects. And I won't go through the whole, the whole list that we have posted here, but every department has been responsible for it, and every department has worked very hard to find these alternative ways to fund city projects. So, guys, it's been an incredible year, and I just, on a personal note, want to thank you for letting me be a part of it. It's been a lot of fun, so thank you very much.
Thank you, City Administrator Sarline, and all the staff and council. It's been a big lift this year for everyone, so nice job, everyone. Next step is time, we'll provide time for residents to comment on items on the agenda. First, some ground rules. Some residents who are not present have a right to have their elected representatives before we do these on behalf of the city in efficient, orderly manners, so we will limit the time to three minutes each. Please make sure you recognize and state your name and city of residence for the record, and direct your comments to the council, it's applicable, not to individual members. And please note that this is not time to ask questions of council, mayors, or staff who are engaged in debate. Please respect the decorum of these proceedings as well, it's due respect according to you. So with that, anyone wishing to speak, please raise your hand. I do know that King County Library System signed in, we have Michelle Brodahl and my queen Irene Lutzdrum, so.
He's in numbers. The Mayor Ross and Councilmembers. I'm Michelle Brodahl, I'm the Regional Manager of the Cascade Region and Squish Snoqualmie's Department, and with me is Irene Lutzdrum, the Library and Information Services Manager. And we're here today to share some facts and highlight some programs at our library which illustrate our connection with Snoqualmie, where we support the city's values, such as creating an extraordinary community for residents, businesses, and neighbors. We'd like to call attention to the flyer you have in hand. It demonstrates that Snoqualmie is a very busy, small library. Look at our circulation count and the number of people that have visited the building. And now Irene will talk about the programs that we were able to provide for the people of Snoqualmie.
We are so thankful for our wonderful partnership with the city and our relationship with Nicole, who invites us to fund community events. Our librarians reach out to children with storytimes and other activities where we read and do crafts. You may have seen us at Snoqualmie's Truck Day, and later at Centennial Fields where families enjoyed stories told by Miss Jennifer. Our summer reading program is very successful, encouraging children to have fun while maintaining their reading skills. We had a summer blast at a community park featuring dancing, music, long games, STEM activities, even a special appearance by Curious George. For welcoming week, we had a map where our patrons identified the countries of their family's origin. The giant chess and gender games on loan from Nicole were a huge hit. For teens, we offer programs such as Game Night and Life After High School to teach job readiness and other life skills. For adults, we have the Snow Valley Book Group that's always open to new members. The East Side Genealogical Society gave an introduction to research, and the Silver Kite Community presented a rock painting workshop. Our friends at the library are an active group who support us by sponsoring many of our programs with money they earn at their book sales. At their last sale, they made $1,900 in just two days, and they're always looking for new members. Tomorrow night at 5:00, we have to have the Dickens Carers come into the library, so we hope to see you there.
Next, next year, we're planning on increasing our staff and hours. A help will be appreciated. Stay tuned, and thank you for your time, and we expect to see you at the Snoqualmie Library soon. Thank you.
Thank you. This flyer is interesting, so I used to, I was, I sat on the board for the King County Library System, right when it opened, I actually read it for it, and then for several years, and it was always amazing to me that the number of checkouts of books, we like this, have the second highest circulation in the nation, the King County Library System total. And so if you read this, there were digital era, right? There are 7.8 million digital titles checked out through Overdrive, ebooks, audiobooks, online. The 2021 statistics identify KCLS as the number two digital circulating library in the United States, and number four in the world. So there's a lot of readers, and everyone, KCLS has always done an interesting, great job with reaching out to lots of people and providing training and all kinds of things, there's so many resources there, so thank you for being part of our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, I think, Mr. Randall, you were, you had a, you had signed up?
Well, Council, my name, my name is Steve Randall, I'm a resident of Washington, I have a fire department, 24 years, 24 years in the Snoqualmie Fire Department. I would just like to address by, to the unfair termination that will be happening in the next couple of weeks. I was hired in 1999 to build a fire department, which I did. But there appears to. Appears to be a personal effort, an inserted effort on the city, the Association of Washington City, Department of Illinois, to maneuver me to a place in which I have to either resign, retire, or be terminated. I've been asking the city for several months for my accruals and telling them that I would like to retire, but I need a good, honest accounting of my accruals so that I can pull the trigger so I can retire. I was injured on 5/17, 21, I have, it's been replaced. Three doctors have told me that I will not be returning to the fire service, except that, but the maneuvering, the positioning of the city and their partners to put me in an untenable position in which I have to either choose between very terrible options. I would just like to address that I am not going to be decided, if we'll have to terminate, I don't believe that that could be wrong, and just so you have a face, in the fact of reception, but not that I'd be, I just want to give a face for that.
Is there anyone else that wishes to? Sir Johnson?
Yes, I'm with Snoqualmie. I expect you guys, a couple of meetings ago, I just wanted to, related to a case about the issue. I come up here very often in my campaign, but I just thought I'd share that our services are still absolutely horrible, and you don't know what it's like to wait two and a half hours in front of the bad weather, and there's a cloud waiting for the bus, because whenever their drivers don't show up, they just. You just wait in this cloud. And this, I know you guys are doing this very best, you know, but I'm really hoping with all the money we spend for King County taxes, that it's not like they return our tax management, their services don't get provided. They, I think it's really unfair for us that are either disabled or to not drive, to have to wait, you know, anywhere from two to three hours for a bus to miss a cloud there. It's very insulting to me, so I'm hoping things get better, because, like I said, 25 degrees weather with no place to sit, it's not great, but not, no place to stay warm, it's not great. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else in the council chambers wishing to comment? Then anyone online, so please raise your hand. Right, moving on, the consent agenda contains approval of City Council Meeting Minutes, number 28, roundtable meeting, number 28, private meeting. Claiming approval report dated December 12, 2022, AB 22-160, formation of file local scrubber agreement, AB 22-163, memorandum agreement, International Association of Firefighters, Local 1828. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Moved by Councilor Watten, seconded by Councilor Christiansen. Is there public comment regarding any of the items here on the consent agenda? Do you feel wishing, have you raised your hand? If you should make public comment?
Yeah, I believe that, I should say, Local 2878.
One second. Right, we're unable to hear you, one second.
Yeah. If I had to guess, his comment is, you know, already came 28, it should be 2878. That's their due.
Oh.
If I had to guess, that's correct.
The 2878. Is there anything else, Bill? Can we try it again, to page area?
Nope, that's all I had, thank you.
Okay, thank you, we have corrected it, thank you. Other comments? Dana, any discussion? Right, all those favors, the eye.
I'm here.
Any opposed name? Right, the consent agenda is approved. Next item is AB 22-159, Park Enforcement Amendment, Section 10, 0800, Snoqualmie Municipal Code. This is the second reading. Report is to City Mayor, Councilor Christiansen, would you please read the summary and motion? Section 10.08.010, of Snoqualmie Municipal Code, if it's parking a vehicle on the street for more than 24 hours, this order clarifies the code that requires that a vehicle must be moved to a different block every 24 hours. Motion is moved to adopt ordinance 1071.
Seconded.
By Councilor Christiansen, seconded by Councilor Vincent. Any public comment regarding this item? No, please raise your hand. If that line, if anyone wants to raise their hand? Anyone? Any discussion? Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, if folks are going to be gone on vacation for a couple of days, it can be kind of hard to get back in the middle of the vacation, move their car. So I think that, to make this a little bit more fair, I think that we should extend this to 72 hours to give folks enough time to move their vehicles. So I move to amend the ordinance to change the period in which a vehicle must be moved in 24 hours to 72 hours.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Johnson, and seconded by Councilor Lefay to increase the hours of the ordinance from 24 to 72 hours. Any discussion? Councilor Lefay?
So I seconded this, just so we can have the conversation a little bit deeper. I did, made a phone call today and found that I was unable to find the actual parking rules and regulations in Snoqualmie District 1 and 2, which is the area which everyone seems to be concerned about. I, in talking to. Someone whose name I could not understand, they thought that regulation was 72 hours, and would send me then that regulation that isn't available, the covenants or bylaws for Snoqualmie District 1 and 2. Unfortunately, I don't have a lot of faith to get that in the next 10 minutes. So when it really comes down to it, I think Councilor Johnson's motion to modify this to 72 hours, this is a common decency thing, to let people know they have a chance to move their car before it gets towed. As it stands now, a car could be just towed, that somebody walked by and parked it, or just towed away. There's no, there's no way to, and this regulation doesn't say even that we have to reach out to the owner and try to attempt to reach out to the owner to find out if their cars are there, you know, on a long-term basis, or they're on vacation, or, you know, someone's away, or someone's visiting. Maybe there's a, if there's a grandparent coming to visit, their newborn child, and their car has been parked there for a while. I just think that this is a little bit excessive to pushing on a, on a 24-hour basis, and then trying to, I mean, it was already excessive, but pushing that to try to make it where someone could, could very easily just be there because they happen to be visiting. I understand the definition, but by doing that, I think changing this to 72 hours is just a common decency thing for residents of Snoqualmie. I don't think we can be pushing this issue this hard as well, so I am supportive of this.
Councilor Vincent?
As described by the police department, they're not looking to tow cars. There's specific areas, specifically frontier, the frontier area in Eagle Point, where parking has been overwhelmed on the city and the city's choked, and there are people that are abusing the parking rules, they're putting their cars on blocks sometimes and working on their cars on the side of the road. The police department works incredibly hard to contact the owners of vehicles, to track them down and find out who the car belongs to. They're not interested in impounding every car that's there for 24 hours and 37 seconds. My, my concern about this is that I live in a house where we have six cars, I have six different drivers, and, and we don't all drive our car every day, so we have our car parked on the street for more than 24 hours at a time. But this is to, to handle specific issues with chronic problems that were, you know, they, they've got the car on, you know, in, in one spot, they push it afoot so that it's no longer technically in that spot anymore, and then the next day, they push it back afoot. And I, that, this is, this is just to allow the police to do their job, because the, the issue right now is that there's the potential for a boiling point, where the problem isn't parking, the problem is the inflamed tensions that arise because of the parking. The goal is to have a longer-term solution where there's, where there's maybe a, a system of parking permits for the, for the area, so that, so that that parking can be more carefully monitored and, and tailored, but for now, the police needed the ability to actually make a difference in the parking issues that they're having right now that are severe. So I would be opposed to extending this to 72 hours, simply on the basis of the fact that I believe our officers and our chief and our captain, that they're not looking to become meter maids all over town and create an impound lot to, I don't know, make money. That's not the goal here. The goal is to keep people's, keep people's spirits in a comfortable place, that they aren't dealing with problems outside of parking because of parking.
Councilor Christiansen? I, my bigger concern on this one is that we're trying to solve a limited situation by changing the entire laws of the city. What we are thinking about, we look forward, but I felt from the program, they do want to ensure that we give the police the opportunities and the skills and the tools that they have to enforce the law. I, I would love to hear if, when she, the chief, would like to address whether changing to 72 hours would help resolve the issue, or if it would make it more difficult to solve the issue.
I can tell you that. When I put this forward to the committee, I had no idea that we would be actually talking about losing the 24-hour ordinance that we already had and going to 72 hours. We do not go around looking for cars to impound, even when we are called on a 911 call up the frontier for a vehicle that is parked in, on the road, that's been there quite some time. We will chalk the tire, we will go through countless efforts to get in touch with the British owner. We will, then, if we can't get in touch with the British owner in 24 hours, we show up and we put a sticker on the car. They get another 24 hours before we will actually remove the car. We, we tow very few of these cars. We, we tow very few of these cars. Officer Mandari, who's been assigned to the community problem of the parking on frontier, goes way out of her realm of, of trying to get these cars moved by, you know, by other means than towing. So moving it to seventy-two hours, I believe it would be a huge step backwards in what we can actually do for the people, the citizens that are calling nine-one-one that are affected by this. I, I don't see where adding seventy-two hours would be even outside of what we're actually already doing. It would, it would be to where in other parts of the city, if, you know, we're called for parking problems, we've lost a tool to be able to communicate with the registered owners and say, look, you have to move this in twenty-four hours. What can we do to get it moved? We would lose that ability. It just doesn't sound the same as you have three days to get this moved. We like to start with twenty-four hours, but we give them additional days. We go the extra, the extra mile of putting a sticker on the car after twenty-four hours and going back another day before we even consider doing that in tow.
Cusper Ron?
I can, I can understand the angst of this matter brings up. However, it is in our municipal code for the twenty-four hours. And this is further clarification of what moving a vehicle means. And the way it was explained to us is that those that are causing the challenges to the city are moving it matter of inches and calling it good. There's no definition that says you have to move it more than inches. And so for that reason, I'm in favor of this and we'll come back later and have a much deeper discussion and more of a permanent solution for that particular neighborhood. But I trust that the police have done what they could and now they're just asking for more clarification and that's what we're giving.
Cusper the say?
I have a question for Captain Ron. I had a vehicle parked in front of my house for almost two and a half weeks. I called the city, over non-emergency line, please, twice. Full times I said, hey, I just want to reach out to the owner, owners to see if they can move it because my, my son needed to park his work truck there for a week so that his work equipment was in front of the house, we had a better view of it. Both instances, I was told, no, we cannot tell you who owns the car and we will take care of it. Truck never, there never was a sticker, there never was a chalk line. There never was any sort of impact. And only after that extended period of time, finally the truck moved and they moved it around the corner. Why is anything different? Why are we treating other citizens of Sopomni differently?
I wouldn't be able to speak to the reasons why specifically for your instance. I could only imagine that we are, we're not allowed to give information to you about the registered owner permits. We cannot, with, with rules that are set by state control that govern our access system. If an officer is told that there is a parking complaint, it's an expectation that the department has that we go out and we run the license plate and find out who it is. We attempt to make contact. It's not automatically chalked if we make contact with them and they say, okay, I'm going to move it in, I'll move it by tomorrow at two o'clock. We would, the officer most likely would take their word for it that it's going to move. Go back the next day, if it's not moved, we'll make another phone call. So I can't say that that didn't happen in this instance. It doesn't look good from out your window when you think that nothing's going on. That's not something that we strive for, but you know, I wouldn't be able to speak to the exact, you know, of what happened during that, or those two calls. If we get calls for parking, we go. There is no step back from no call too small. It's, we take them seriously. We go, you know, as soon as we have somebody available.
Cusper Johnson?
Yeah, one of my biggest concerns about this is I find it interesting that we are using this as an opportunity to use our police to target our one affordable housing development. Just, just kind of surprised that we would want to take that route. So what I was thinking was that it would make more sense to just kind of give these folks a chance to move their vehicles if they were gone for some extended period of time. So I'm, I'm curious from the police then, since you're here. You know, if someone is on vacation, what is the intent of the police? Is it, well, too bad you gotta get home in forty-eight hours or else we're telling you, or I should say, tell them twenty-four, actually maybe forty-eight. That's what you're describing. But you know, say they're going to be gone for five days, is their car getting impounded?
If we make, if we make contact with them and we set up a program of when and we get, when, what day are you coming back? We, I would definitely, if I was dispatched to that call, I would give them the time. And I would let the person know that called nine-one-one, your car is going to be there for a little while longer because they're on vacation. They're going to move it by this day, I'll follow up with them.
Cusper Vincent?
I, I would, I would push back on, on the terminology that our police are targeting an area. There, there's an area where there's a problem. That doesn't mean that the police are targeting that area. It means that's the area where there's a problem. I don't think it's the same as, it sounds, if, if we say that they're targeting an area, it makes it sound like they're picking on an area. But if there's one area where there's the issue, then what are they supposed to do? They're supposed to go to another area and do the same thing so that it looks better and go handle a problem that isn't there?
Cusper the say?
I totally respect the job you're doing, don't get me wrong. You guys have one of the most difficult jobs. You guys have the most difficult jobs in Sopomni. Sorry, chief. But yes, you can spin it any way you want. We are targeting a certain area. It's on the record, it's been discussed in committee, it's been discussed at council. All of this is for one area of the city where citizens of Sopomni live. That's targeting a certain segment of our population. That has, to me, has grave concerns that we would not, not just pass a law, but modify an existing law that targets a certain segment of our population. So we vote for this ordinance to vote for targeting citizens of Sopomni who park in a way we don't like. So that's just, it's just not acceptable.
Cusper Vincent?
I mean, since you brought up the fire department, if, if we take that logic and there's a fire at one of the restaurants on Center Street, then we would need to dispatch a fire truck to that fire. If we were also saying, we don't want to give, you know, any kind of special, let's, let's send a fire truck to, you know, to make sure that City Hall's not on fire. It doesn't make any sense. You, you send, you, you work where the problem is. Okay, that the problem is there, that is where the problem is. And you can wish that it wasn't or, or I, I, I think, I think that, you know, the, the reason the problem is there has nothing to do with the police. It's because of the way that, that, that housing development has been placed with a single street going into and out of it. We knew this was going to be a problem years ago when the place was built. Now it's a problem. And that has nothing to do with, with anybody targeting anybody. We knew that this problem was going to exist five years ago. And now we have it, let's deal with it and not pretend that somebody's doing something wrong by trying to take care of it.
We have a discussion or comments? We have a motion to change from twenty-four to seventy-two hours. We still need to keep the verbiage in, to have verbiage about, you still have to move your car, block away. So, voting on this amended portion, all those favors the eye?
Aye.
Any opposed name?
Aye.
So that does not pass. So the original motion is the, it's currently in the municipal code, twenty-four hours, but instead of, now it defines how far you need to move it away from the block. All those favors the eye?
Aye.
More discussion? Sorry, I was, I was just trying to get to the motion. Okay, so I would move that I'd move that this agenda bill either came out or sent it back to committee. Consideration.
Motion seconded.
This motion to refer to bill twenty-two dash one five nine, for the first amendment, back to Public Safety Committee and the second, I, so I, seconded by Cusper Johnson. Any discussion regarding this item? I mean, the motion is that we should bring it back to Public Safety and consider more what the other alternative should be. I know that there's a problem, I want to make sure that the appropriate tools to get it done. I know that the city is aiming forward to hopefully some additional plans or options in the year, maybe that's where probably through December. Cusper Johnson?
Yeah, I think that this is a really good opportunity to relook at some of those other options we discussed previously. We talked about the idea of, you know, not allowing cars that are inoperable to park on city streets. This is one of those things you can look into, there's the idea of the parking permits. I like the idea of this, going back to, just saying that we can come up with a more, what's the word I want to use? A, a more permanent solution.
Yeah, Cusper Vincent?
Interesting thought process. I sort of have always had these conversations with folks about this being a black and white issue. And it's really a lot of gray. I think we all have different opinions on how, how this could work, but the idea if the council will, will vote for this and let it go back to committee and come up with some longer-term solutions, I think you're going to come to a really good chance of finding a, a, a good method and that has more flexibility that gives the, our police officers, you know, a word that isn't, or gives them more tools in their toolbox. More, maybe, you know, a pilot program or more extensive parking regulations. If I hear correctly and our, our police are already reaching out and, and have within them the ability to to take action after twenty-four hours and they, and they are trying to work with the community, I like that. What's, I would rather see is take a little bit longer, not cause havoc during the holidays and come, come with a solution back to council, satisfy everybody's, everybody's really desire here, which is to go to the front of the community and not have, have these issues happening, we don't have to, so I think that's a good point.
Cusper Vincent had his stand up to, Jerry, additional comments?
Yeah, my understanding was that we were, we are working on a pilot program for parking permits in the area and that this was a stopgap measure to give the police a better ability to address the problem in the interim while that program being put together. So I would, I would like to allow them to have that. I don't feel like in, in all the descriptions that I've heard, the way that they're dealing with parking problems, I don't feel like they're building a sledgehammer here. I think they're trying very hard to work with everyone that has a parking issue. So I'm not concerned that, that we're going to have an army of meter maids up there, you know, just taking cars and, and towing them away. The, the description of the process that they're going through up there seems to me very patient, very hands-on, very understanding of the residents of the area. And, but I think we need to give the police the, the tools that they need to deal with the problem while we're coming up with a longer-term solution.
I also think it's important to keep in mind, as many council members have, it sounds like that our police are not just out there being law enforcement, looking at whatever the code says and then saying, well, I guess that's exactly what we have to do to the letter, but rather thinking of them as being members of the community who help to make us stronger and better. And I, I would encourage, if this goes back to committee, that they continue to look down those lines.
Okay, any discussion? So the motion is to refer this agenda bill back to Public Safety, all those favors the eye?
Aye.
Any opposed name?
Aye.
Cusper Ron, what is your vote?
Aye.
Our ayes, one opposed, Cusper, this is opposed. Right. So going back to Public Safety. We have to make sign on the maybe twenty-two, six-two, twenty-twenty-one to twenty-two by any budget amendment. This is the second reading of ordinance twelve seventy-two. Yeah, we have one member that at the committee here, which is Cusper Richardson, that is the, the power in motion.
The intent of this ordinance is to amend the twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two by annual budget to enable the city to establish a cheaper grid fund structure prior to the start of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four by annual and to account for the remittance of school impact fees in Sopomni Valley School District. The city of Sopomni is requesting an additional appropriation of eleven point five million. That includes an approximately five million dollar reduction in expenditures and a sixteen point five million dollar increase in transfers out to other funds within the city to support these two proposed amendments.
Is this, this motion? Move to adopt ordinance twelve seventy-two, remaining the twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two by annual budget.
Okay.
By Cusper Christian, seconded by Cusper Johnson. And then the budget. So you have a comment regarding this item? So please raise your hand. Or a line. And? Have a comment? We are in a discussion, we have our manager, Drew B. K. Summarize it to English.
So I'll just add, thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you very much, Council, for having me here today. This agenda bill itself is really kind of instrumental in terms of implementing the twenty-three, twenty-four line of the budget. Really a large goal of this budget amendment for you is to close out funds in this funding system. We're ready to go into the new year with a fresh fund structure. It's easy to understand and it's comprehensible, right? So not only the council, but also the rest of staff as well as the public, too. As Councilmember Richardson stated, we're here to establish the perfect fund structure, but also a second component to this is the remittance of the school impact fees to Sopomni Valley School District. Reason for that is because the state auditor's office is coming up with some new kind of guidelines for the most part for cities. Regarding the GASP eighty-four, which is kind of obscure basis basically, but it helps us to account things properly and must be accomplished across all the cities. And so often we do not budget for judiciary funds. But in this case, given their kind of more stricter definitions of what is defined as judiciary, we actually have to bring these into our kind of overall budget structure. before we can actually remit them back to the Palmyra Valley School District. And so that is kind of what we're doing on that front. Here's proposing a new fund, the school impact fund, so that we can transfer those funds to the Palmyra Valley School District. In essence, this agenda bill would basically reduce our funds from 43 to 18. So it is a very significant decrease. And I think this is the fund structure that we want to utilize moving forward. I don't anticipate anything coming back to you afterwards, or hopefully the next decade or more, for example, with any sort of really dramatic changes in terms of the fund structure. So this is, will be a fairly huge improvement, I think, overall for the city. There is one wrinkle that we need to note tonight. That is, is the two council members not present. The requirements in order to pass a budget amendment require five of them, so one more than a majority of all members on council. So we are seeking consensus tonight on this. If we cannot gather consensus tonight, we will hopefully be returning in the new year with a budget amendment to, I think, the 23, 24 budget. Or maybe a vote of, I don't know what Bob said, like, for consideration of this potentially for the next year. As well as, we are seeking consensus from all five council members tonight. And that is the one additional wrinkle. So with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and thank you very much for your time.
Senator St.?
I need you to explain to me, and as close to plain citizen words as you can, because I have a three-year degree in budget analysis, and you understand this better than anyone here. Where, where is this $11.5 million coming from and where is it going? Because I, I, I'm still a little fuzzy on it in terms of, are we all of a sudden appropriating $11.5 million? So walk me through the basics.
So it's important to note that this money is not leaving the city doors. It's staying within our total, within the city itself, within our, all the funds that we have currently. So, in terms of saving the community development fund, Fund 130, we have in the 23, 24 budget, we back to apartment into the general fund. This budget amendment would transfer that cash from the community development fund into the general fund. In addition, we're consolidating the preferred funds into, and I could walk through probably each one that we have as party ordinance. You know, section four of the ordinance, why don't I go ahead and try to work that out? Everyone's seen ordinance here?
Yes.
So we have section three, which has section four, the closing and elimination of funds. So both the operated reserve fund and the revolving reserve fund are going to be consolidated into what is currently called the revert reserve fund. In essence, what we're doing is we're creating one reserve fund in total, except for having three separate ones. And we would rename that from just the contingency reserve fund to reserve fund. The fire replacement fund, the environmental sustainability fund, human services fund, would all get consolidated into the general fund in terms of where those expenditures would come from out of the 23, 24 line of the budget, that would come out of the general fund. So for example, the human services allocation that council approved maybe about a month ago at this stage, instead of the 84 out of Fund 016 would be paid for out of Fund, the general fund itself, 001, and it's a part of the non-departmental functional classification now. In addition, the King County Trails Lucky Fund, the Palmyra Bridge Capital Innovation Fund, Real Estate Exercise Tax Fund, Total Roundabout and Path Pete Fund, the King Conservation District Grant Fund. And just to skip ahead to the 2011 LTGO bond debt service fund, 2016 LTGO bond debt service fund, the 2021 refunded LTGO bond debt service fund, the Parks and Playground Capital Fund, the Plant Reduction and Purge Fund, the Total Roundabout Construction Fund, the Total Parking Lot Fund, Facilities Capital Fund, all those funds would get wrapped into Fund 310, which we are now calling the Non-Facilities Capital Fund. That's a major kind of piece of this, and the purpose of that is so that we can see one number on the SCAP, total dollar amount for how much we intend to spend or reduce that number of years in our budget ordinance. Clearly, instead of trying to separate how that one number, and that's the SCAP across 10 plus months or so. That makes it very challenging for people to really kind of understand or pretty grasp to do. You told us this one number, but then you're showing us this entire picture here. What the heck is going on? It's often a question that we do, and so we want to try to hopefully simplify that and make it more understandable, comprehensible for everyone involved. Just to go back up a little bit, the community development fund, as I talked about a little bit earlier, is getting consolidated into the general fund. Now we'll see as part of the 23, 24 line of the budget, a community development functional classification. So that is clear for everyone, what the city department is spending on and what their total appropriation is. Instead of just having a separate fund for them, it's now just kind of wrapped into this general fund itself.
I think we do have a question on the floor. Congressman Johnson?
So, which I had in front of me here. In our budget, we had that one page that had all the various years coming back to, it was 2019. Anyway, a lot of this blacked out.
Yeah.
Because that was us getting rid of, or consolidating funds. This is saying, do that.
Yes.
And by us simply adopting the 2022, 2023 budget that showed those funds, that was not the actual or hand action that actually consolidated the funds. We have to do that as a separate thing.
Yes, that, okay. Basically, what we're proposing here in this, otherwise I'd come back to 23, 24 and then propose the same thing. We're trying to get the cash into the proper funds so we can close those out and simplify the structure. The, let's see, what's the next one with your own list? Home elevation fund, so we've never actually have responded. We have certainly elevated homes in the past, but we haven't done any of that recently, and therefore we're proposing to close that fund. In addition, if we go down a little bit further, this time we get to Fund Number 404, the water capital permit fund, the sewer capital permit fund, sewer water capital permit fund. Those really haven't probably seen any expenditures for over a decade now at this point, because we didn't utilize something called the utilities capital fund, which is Fund 417. Now at this point, in addition, the 2017 refunded revenue bond debt service fund, and 2018 revenue bond debt service fund, 407, 408, consolidated into that utilities capital fund as well. Through Hall, as part of the SCAP, the council adopted, we made sure to show our debt service. And so we're wrapping that debt service and the utilities capital fund, we want to make sure that one number, they can see on that one page in the SCAP regarding utilities shows up in our budget ordinance at that same number, basically. Below that, you'll see the risk management fund, and I'll scroll down a little bit here, and the shared services fund. The risk management fund is getting consolidated into the general fund. In essence, we've taken our property coverage as well as general liability insurance out of the general fund. And so any sort of cash that we have up in the risk management fund get ruled into the general fund. And then lastly, the shared services fund, this is a rather neat fund that we've had. It's contained a lot of kind of different elements, such as cellular telephone charges, which you would then pay for out of the IT fund. But also things like state audit services too, which are now going to get wrapped into basically finance and HR department, which is part of the overall administrative department's functional classification. So, the cash that's remaining in that fund will then get transferred into the general fund from there. And so, in essence, we're trying to consolidate from 43 to 18 funds. Just to try to help kind of make things more simple for everyone involved. And so really, that's kind of the major intent and goal of this agenda bill. I hope that answers.
Senator St.?
Sorry, try to, well, I didn't want to interrupt you, because that's good information, because that's important to understand what you're proposing. Well, I'm trying to figure out, specifically looking at is actually, it's in the ordinance, page two of the ordinance. I'm trying to find there. It's in, it's in one of the pages two. What I'm struggling with is I'm not finding that, that describes me, how, how the budget ordinance totals, 118,862. I understand the lights moving around from one to one to one, but I don't get that total. The only time I get that total is if I look at the budget totals comparison table, which is, it's six. Show that, but then I don't quite follow how how we get to that. So I get this appropriations from the original ordinance, which would be appropriations of the proposed ordinance. But if our original ordinance is lower than the proposed ordinance, where does the 11.5 million come from? I'm trying to figure out. That's what I don't really understand.
So we cited within here the $16 million in transfers. That $16 million in transfers is equal to the sum of column B and column H. So and then essence, if you probably round out from there, you'd probably reach $16 million, which is reported in the agenda bill. In addition, the estimated expenditures of column D plus column I should get you to roughly $5 million, which is reported in the agenda bill that we have there. This is a pointful take, and this is extremely complicated, because we're going from like page to page to page to page to try that. Part of the reason why I've put so many tables in here is to try and piece the puzzle together, for the most part. I do have these fund reconciliation tables for 2021, 2022 that are attempting to bridge that gap. So these reconciliation tables are trying to reconcile when the amendment request table to be oriented itself, to try to get us to that. So for each on reconciliation, for each fund, I started with the adopted budget and then added or subtracted in what we're going to basically need to do in order to get us to the new budget that we see there. So, so when you add up a number of these columns, and I don't think I have a total at the bottom for 2021 and 2022 necessarily. But when I do that, I'm reaching the numbers that I have as a part of the overall summary table that you saw earlier like this. By the way, these numbers that we see from the original ordinance, those that proposal, proposed ordinance, those that you see there are equal to the bottom of the table that you see here. So the total for all funds are reported in that summary. But, no, I see your point. It is very confusing. How do we get from one to the next? We try to lay it out as easily as possible, because there's a lot of numbers that are changing kind of across the board itself, and it is, it's complex.
This was reviewed by the committee, and sent to council. Do you have any other questions regarding amendment? Senator St.?
I'd ask them, I guess only have one, if we have a member here, was it sent with a recommendation approved, or was it sent for council to review? Commissioned or recommendation?
So, a lot of what I'm trying to do here is housekeeping to really kind of get us lined up for the start of the next year. In essence, we're not misusing the appropriation that we've given to us in stretch. In fact, most of the years already completed, so the departments don't have opportunity to necessarily use that appropriation. It's giving me the capacity in order to make the change necessary to enable the 23, 24 budget, and sort of choose starting next year. So, with that said, I'm thankful for council, for their diligence on this, and any insight or any direction council wishes to go, the staff will move in that direction as well. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Favorites say aye?
Aye.
Any close name? Right, which assets, the name. By annual budget amendment is approved. Be gone to, thank you. Public Safety Committee, maybe 22-161, interlocal agreement between King County and the city's traffic and jail service. She says, we can leave the summary motion. The purpose of this agenda bill is to authorize approval of a new 2022, 2024, true local agreement, I L A. With King County for jail services, it violates for increases for medical care for $8,000. Which for the field agreement is between King County and the city of Palmyra for jail services and authorizing. By Congressman Christian, second by Congressman Watson, to approve maybe 22-161, agenda bill for jail services. Say, or confirm this item? If you can. One, or in City Hall. Any discussion? Senator one?
We have a couple experts in the room. I, I would like to indulge their knowledge. So could you give us a, a brief explanation of, of the challenges in, in dealing with this issue?
So, to, to get you guys up to speed on how we make decisions on, we book and where we book our, our permanent jail facilities. We have three jails at our disposal. The cheapest and the one that we use the most is the City of Issaquah jail. That is for misdemeanors and gross misdemeanors only. If they're not available, if they won't take somebody due to medical or site-related problems, we move on to our next one, which would be Score Jail, C-TAC. A little bit more expensive, but they do have medical beds that do have different resources that Issaquah doesn't have available. There are times, not very, not very often, that both Issaquah and Score will not take our, our in custody person. That only leaves the King County jail in downtown Seattle is our only other option. As of right now, the Palmyra Police Department is only booking at the Score for mandatory bookings only. Those are domestic violence assaults that occur within four hours. Those are DUIs, multiple DUIs within the last seven years of a mandatory booking. Most other of our misdemeanors and gross misdemeanors are, they leave the discretion to the officers about whether or not to book. I have a directive off my officers that we will only book into Score for mandatory bookings. That goes for the King County jail as well. It would take both Issaquah and Score to say, no, we're not taking your mandatory booking before they go to Seattle. It is quite a bit more monetarily for a booking in King County. We've most recently lost a contract with, with the Yakima Police Department. We've most recently lost a contract with the Yakima Police Department. We used to put our in customs that were seen by the judge and were sentenced to anywhere from, you know, a week to 30 days or more. Over into Yakima was quite a bit cheaper for long-term housing, but that has gone away. Due to COVID and staffing restrictions, outside agency jails are not taking new clients and we're losing the contracts and our ability to go to those other places. The when I ran the numbers for 2021 and 2022 for the city of Snoqualmie, we were only putting in about five people into the King County jail on average each year. Those are for usually about a 10-day stay. The majority of what we're seeing now is that the court in Issaquah will hold people, they will give a sentence after they're found guilty. And if there's a medical or a psychological issue that is going to be additional resources, the Issaquah jail will deny a booking or the housing for those people. Then we have to go down the list like I told you. There are several of them this year that have ended up at King County jail. We have one right now that escaped from the hospital, after being taken to the hospital by a Score jail guard. And Score and Issaquah refused to take that person back. She is now sitting in the King County jail. The problem is, we just don't have other options. We are dictated by the county on how much we're going to pay. Contract is not a negotiable one. It's one that is sent down to us and, you know, every two years, and it has a 9.5% inflator after the first year. As I explained to the committee, it actually goes up just a little bit because of other other fees that are attached to the bookings to into the billing. So basically, that's where we are on this. It's a necessary equal. We don't have a choice. If we say no to this, then we will be down to only two places that we can book our misdemeanors in. And there are times, not very often, that those two refuse, and we can't go there.
Thank you. Any discussion? Do you men all, favorite CI?
Aye.
That's Janice Lee, and we petition the agreement between King County and City of Snoqualmie for jail services. Excited is AB 22-165, first amendment to our local agreement between the City of Snoqualmie and police services. Cost-sharing agreement between the two cities for cost behavior health specialists. Just going to present a summary motion. Agenda bill would approve the first amendment to the intralocal agreement between the State of Markland and the City of Snoqualmie for police services. The first amendment provides for 50/50 cost-sharing agreement between the two cities for the cost of behavioral health specialists. We should approve the first amendment to the intralocal agreement between the City of Markland and the City of Snoqualmie for police services and authorize the marriage. Do you have any comment regarding this?
So good.
Move by Cusper, Christian, and a second by the same to approve AB 22-165. Does anybody comment regarding this item? Don't lose your hand. Cusper Chambers, or online. Right. So any discussion regarding this?
Yeah.
Cusper Vincent.
When's the first chance we get to talk about getting Miss Lady Ray's? Because from everything I understand, she's transforming this valley in nothing but positive ways for our police and our fire department. That's all I have to say.
Cusper Christian, it would be nice if Chief Pips could come and speak to us now.
I'll follow that. I think you're spot on when you say that she's made a huge impact. And I think I talked about some of the circumstances when I brought this before public safety, is she is making a tremendous impact daily in cases that we, without her, would not be unable to do. And example of that is we have some individuals that live in this community that require many responses by either fire or police personnel or assistance. And she has taken upon herself to find out who those individuals are, to find out if there's a way and not only can we reduce our levels of service and response numbers to, well, if we can, but also to help a person essentially, that's the goal here. And we won't be required. And so she's taken upon herself to reach out to those individuals and one specific one without being too specific is we responded to that for assistance in that case with this person for over 250 times as she already. We could cut that down to 100. That's 150 less responses that officers or firefighters not go and help her. I mean, she's getting better. She's getting better. And that's what the whole role is. And I just got story after story after story. It's just an amazing thing to watch. I just sit back and let her do it. We really got lucky. And I'm completely, again, not even talking about the agenda bill itself, I'm just bragging on her, but I know and I felt the support from this council from day one. I know you guys know how important this is to this community. And so if you have any questions regarding the agenda bill, I can answer those. I do appreciate your support in this, and I think when we do our six-month report to you, that you'll find out that it is being effective. Not just the incidents themselves, but the numbers. Her numbers are staggering for the first six months. I kind of created this slow, she would slowly start figuring out how this all looks. No, that's not her. She ran right and got it, and she's doing it. And she's fit right in. She's valid with the officers all the time. On weekends and nights. Pretty amazing.
Captain Johnson.
I believe that this program was largely worked on by council representative Callan and that this was substantially supported by the state and really both our representatives. I'm hopeful that positive reports can get back to them about this program, and since we're talking about the budget here, perhaps we can continue getting funding from the state or even other communities could look at this and they could hear about it and they say, hey, we'd like to do this too.
There are many, if not most, communities that are moving towards this kind of mental health response team. There's different versions. They look a little different than maybe ours. Ours is embedded within the first responders. Her office is in the police department. She rides with the police officers. And then she also goes out with the fire department and goes out on their responses as well. That's a little bit different than in most cases. In most cases, they're kind of offset from the first responders and they respond when requested. We read actually, my belief in this is that there's more opportunity for them to assist if they're with the officer because they're going to be there when it's happening. Sometimes we don't know if there's a mental health issue until we arrive. It's kind of nice when they're already there. And so just that alone will have increased the opportunities for help in these situations. So our way of doing it is not the norm, but I think it's going to show that it is effective. And I've been going to several meetings, including one last week for countywide. There's some great things going on, and I think you're going to start seeing those in the next six months to a year. The money that's going to be put into this and the successes from it as well. So this is just a start. It's just a start.
Cusper Vincent.
This doesn't, I don't, this really refers to this particular agenda bill, but do we need to start thinking about increasing this program? Figure, I mean, if we're we're saving a lot of money by having this employee, maybe having another one will save us even more. I don't, are you going to the numbers that you give us on your six-month report, will those be enlightening in that respect?
Yeah, I think those numbers are going to be an indication that it's successful, but if you're talking about, you know, increasing the number of people that are able to do this, I think you need to have a good year, maybe two, to find out, really, is it impactful or is it just something that, you know, was good for the first six months to a year? I think that this is something that we have to evaluate as we go on forward. I know better than to bring something before you to not have the data. So I'm going to have that.
Cusper, one.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Pips. We actually discussed putting this on the consent agenda, but I prefer to have the chief and the captain here to address these couple of things. And just to put it in perspective, this was funded thanks to legislative action, but the agenda bill is speaking to the continuation of the program where we're actually funding this program going forward. And I think it's important that what council member Benson points out, and that is, you've got this choice. You have one more police officer or behavioral specialist. If you have the choice, it seems like being able to respond to those repetitive problems that causes as taxpayers a lot more, it's a good decision of having this person particularly her skill set in this position first, and then we can address, you know, whether there's a need to increase other public safety, but it's an incredible program. I've heard nothing but great things in the community. And thank you for your leadership in this as well, Chief Pips.
Yeah, it was just a little minor thing that even if, let's just say, a year into the program, it appears that the gains from the service seem to be leveling off. And that doesn't mean that the program has done its job and that we're done with it. You know, that can be an indication that we need to maintain that same level of service to be repetitive so that we don't end up going back to the same situation.
Right. Any other discussion? All is favorite CI?
Aye.
The interlocal agreement between our minutes for police services. Any further report, public safety? The next one is the AB 22-157, annual flight plane management and loss plan, and this is just in your packets for your mission only. So if you have any questions, you can reach out to our director in the mayor. Is there any further report between development?
No further report.
Captain Say?
One quick question. I realized Terry has left. Mr. Sorensen was here earlier. I'm not sure whether the King County Metro letter falls under the category at all or not, but if I think we're mentioning by the chair, or maybe a library, or if the mayor wants to mention them, I'm just going to go with the mayor.
Yes, we've been meeting with our King County customer, Sarah Carey, and also Metro increasing frequency of bus service across Snoqualmie Valley, as all the different mayors have been part of that. So it's ongoing discussion and frequency will increase with light rail with them, ribbon, and Issaquah. They're also helping fund Snoqualmie Valley transit or transport, which they're also going to increase the frequency soon. They think they have a funding to not have employees, and they're also going to have them for service on the weekends. So there is work going on with Metro as well as we are signing a letter to Metro to add best service across state road 18, because it does not exist. And so if you're commuting from Covington or Meade Valley Snoqualmie, which is Issaquah, there's not a bus service available. So council assigned that, and then I also have a letter that is signed by the mayors from Covington, Meade Valley, Rockland, Snoqualmie, and New Ball as well to sign that. So that will also go into that. There's a lot of discussion going on, mentioning that. Good night, everybody. Terry. We have ongoing discussion about Metro. I understand the reason.
No further report.
Next, any report is perhaps like works committee, AB 22-164, meaning purchase of KME fire truck pumper. Just a few weeks, whatever the summary motion. Always back here.
The intent of this action is to approve the purchase of one KME fire truck pumper in 2024. The equipment will replace existing units in the city's fleet and improve the efficiency and effectiveness of the program. Build time currently for the apparatus is 450 to 490 days placing delivery toward the end of budget cycle and will be purchased off the source well cooperative purchase contract. Move to approve the purchase of one KME fire truck.
Move by Cusper Johnson, second Cusper Christian, to approve the purchase of KME fire truck pumper. Is there probably comment regarding this item? The hall, and that's the anyone on that scene, even online as well? So is there, Cusper, is there any discussion regarding this? Or do you have information you want to provide? Chief?
The only thing that we have is the global back to the council was to make a recommendation as far as the prepaying of the Okay, that's what I figured. So the recommendation from staff, talking with the finance department and with the fleet department is to prepay 50% or 15%. That'll provide at some level some reassurance that the vehicle will get built in a timely manner. The challenge of these types of situations is when you're ordering one vehicle compared to the city or a large fire district comes in, comes in number of 10 vehicles, sometimes they'll push yours to the side to work on theirs. And having retaining that 50% will certainly help with that. So that's our recommendation from the administration.
Any comment? Discussion? To extend?
I can give a second too. It's okay. I just was going to ask, hey, we're going to prepay 50% of the future. Yeah.
There was a slide earlier that said, show me money.
Now you have established that you've got your second hardest job in the city.
Okay, fantastic. Yes.
Still, we're still out with the third hardest job.
I'm glad that there's a list that you can keep. In essence, we already have the appropriation available to us in this year's budget. If we indeed do get out of this year's budget, but in addition, we also have budgeted $900,000 within 23, place for the pair plan for the 23, 24 budget as well. Obviously, there's a 10% build contingency at heartless, which could be that upwards, we might pay upwards of a million dollars towards placement of this vehicle, but we might buy another alternative or savings within the year or the R and R fund or make that progress potentially. So with that said, we have the appropriation available to us this budget, but we also have the appropriation available to us the next budget. The only difference is now we may spend the cash sooner or may spend it later depending on what council decides.
Cusper Johnson.
So if we were to do that, we have to have a motion to amend the 2020 or 2022 budget?
No, we have sufficient appropriation within the fund itself, right, or to Yeah.
Would we have to amend the motion then to just clarify what we wanted administration to do to council? Or is it just?
Please, just in terms of nations.
Yeah, in terms of 50%. Yeah, I think just leave a clarifying motion on that 50%.
Joe, you want to be good?
Yeah, I understand. You can tell me if this is clarifying enough. All right. All right, move to amend the motion to approve fifty percent prepayment.
Second.
Move back, Counselor Johnson, big one, Counselor Benson, to amend the motion for a fifty percent prepayment. Any discussion? In that, all there's the eye.
Aye.
Any closing? So that motion passes, and the original motion is to purchase KME fire truck. All is clear, see eye.
Aye.
Any closing? unanimous, fire truck.
Thank you.
Counselor Benson?
So Chief, how soon can we get that four hundred and fifty to four hundred and ninety days clock started at this point?
That clock, the clock starts during the pre-build meeting, we've already said. So we're trying to get it in before the end of the year, but it's probably immediately after the first year. Thank you.
Any further report from the press?
No further report.
Is there any report from the finance administration? Just me, so no, this one. Let's say priorities discussion, Counselor Christiansen provide an update. Do we have a definition? Yeah. So we have spoken several times on the draft twenty twenty-three list of priorities. I have updated a copy, this is the same one we submitted last week with a few updates. This one has included the reordering of the highest priorities. I know that there was some back and forth at the meeting. To do note, the number now that has changed. Right now, it's the community center expansion meeting with it at the top. The comments at the last meeting include that we may have better lock securing that funding to the extent of that is our number one. Ask for questions as to a specific timing. After comments from the administration, I did not include any limiting language in terms of what we would be seeking that funding to go ahead and go forward. There was a comment to include the public safety fix as the second priority. It has affordability. It's also one of our highest priorities. The last meeting also talked about the fact that what we do have movement going forward in terms of coming up with solutions that would be most impactful for the city itself and our our immediate area. Additional facts, you know, information's worth looking for from any kind of contractor who's doing the city as well. Sort of needing quarterly to go ahead and do that best ways to address our issues. In addition, going down to other priorities, some of these, only for wish, only which has been added. Received some additional questions, which will watch and suppose have been incorporated in the document. So please go ahead and review it and look back. Concerns are not hopefully important. Counselor one.
My my only comment is Snoqualmie Parkway and SR eighteen kind of go hand in hand together. And I, my concern is there's always this kind of rumbling out there about the gas tax being suspended. And and it absolutely may delay the start of the projects if that should happen, because it will reprioritize things, even though that we're, this happens to be one of the top priorities of the state. It may throw scheduling change to all of that. And keep in mind that that is a twenty twenty-nine completion date for all those projects.
It's true, but it was federal money. For the the extension from D Creek to over.
Right, right. So so either if the state or federal gas taxes are suspended, that may prolong. Right.
You're asking that includes the right.
Right. But the rest was.
Counselor say?
Yeah, I continue to have trouble with the idea that expansion of the community center is more important than public safety and housing for our community. I just can't prioritize a building over safety and shelter. I know there's some numbers there, but ordering matters. And and I I just don't see how we can go that route. I just can't. Internally grapple with this, I just can't, I can't go along with that idea that the building is the building for recreation is more important than public safety. So while I, while I would prefer to see that reshuffled. I know council may not see the same way, but that's my, that's my take on that. Second item, I'm kind of concerned about the conversation is. Am I hearing this incorrectly, that we do not have the dollars for the Snoqualmie Parkway yet? But that was appropriated by the state in last budget. So why is it? So why is that a priority? Or other priority, you understand why Snoqualmie Parkway would be on there if we've been appropriated dollars from the state. We have, we have money and we can go over it. Maybe Mr. Chambers. Well, you're up to number three now.
Okay.
Fire chiefs, Snoqualmie, Dallas. So we have the five million from the state for the paving fund as part of turning the Parkway over to the state. We have to upgrade every crossing to ADA standards, that's an additional one point three million that we're gonna have to fund. So I'm just on right now, I'll have firmer figures.
I completely hear and agree with what Councilmember Lassie is saying about the ordering. To me, what I'm, what I'm trying to keep in mind is who the intended audience is for this. Not that it's not obviously open to the public, showing in the middle of the meeting here, right? So anyone can read it. But the intent is for our state legislators. And the reason that I'm okay with it the way it is, is because the first one is a very specific ask for our state legislators to see that we would like them to to include in the budget. Whereas the other things are a little bit more broad in scope, a lot less specific. Not that we don't want them to do it at all, but they, and there are also things that many different communities are going to be asking for. And so in the eyes of our state legislators, what I envision is that they would see that first thing, okay, that's a specific ask. And they also care about these things that everyone else cares about, even though City of Snoqualmie's council isn't recommending what the specific fixes are necessarily to those problems. So with that lens, I'm okay with the way that it is. But I completely agree that if I were to be talking to citizens of Snoqualmie, first thing they're talking about is housing affordability. How are their kids ever going to afford a house? Or how are their grandparents ever going to afford a house here? So anyway, that's, that's the way that I'm viewing this document here.
Counselor one.
I'm gonna totally agree with Councilmember Lassie. I believe, I believe public safety is our first concern, is that's the reason why families choose to move here is it's a safe community and we need to preserve it. Secondly, I want to get the kids out of my house, so affordable housing is is top concern. So I put that as number two, and I would put the community center as my third priority. So that's only two votes so far. Same thing, so see, you know, the wording is the same, it's just the order is slightly different because it's all about me.
Counselor Benson?
All right, all right, Councilmember Creations, I'm covering.
Um, I was just gonna say, I actually. Yeah, the the reason that I had it reordered this way was just because again, it's a specific ask. We're moving, there's a little down my mind that public safety and housing affordability are probably important. The regional ones are important. And that's how we had it last year, we got the final knowledge of the Parkway. Yes, number one. All these others are important tonight. You know, we created this Snoqualmie Valley Government Association on State Priorities that that has public safety, housing affordability, the revenue options, all those around there, so we're pushing from different angles. You know, they're very important, but done the more specific thing that's integrated in Snoqualmie.
Yeah, I'm just saying the same thing you just said, that the audience is important. I I don't think there's anybody in this room who doesn't feel that public safety is the most important thing in our community. And since we're the people overseeing that, we're, we're gonna make sure that that's always at the top of our list at the local level. But as far as getting action from the state, we want to word it in such a way that we we can, we can get that that action in the most tangible way possible. So fully agree with the way Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Christiansen described it.
You too, Mayor. Good job.
Vote on this or?
Yeah, I was, I was curious what exactly we'd be voting to do. But anyway, I wish we had another two councilmembers present, but I realized we're at the end of the year. If we weren't right at the end of the year, I would have said, let's wait until we're all here. But given that time, I think we should just go for it. But I am curious what exactly we'd be voting to do. Would it be a resolution of some sort? I don't know, I just want to check and tell that.
Do you approve it this way or not?
We'll have to do what with it.
Well, this is gonna go to our legislators and we'll be talking about work. So we've laid out now. Oh, I just, when we did this for twenty twenty-two, how did we structure it at the time? I just don't recall. Yeah, I think as though, I think we looked at it, said that looks great, and then whoever, our legislators thought it, so. Keep that like this. Sure, for legislators.
Aye.
Can we modify and amend this Snoqualmie Parkway to read Snoqualmie Parkway and SR eighteen?
Counselor Johnson?
I'd be in favor of that.
Yay.
This is the dollar of the final, start sharing. I think last year, the letter to us from Parkway. Moving to the same thing with. These there. Yes, but I I have this also much more calls to help as well. Should be helpful to organize. Thank you. So next item is mayor's report. Just a couple of updates. So first of all, watch for an email from Dan Hall containing a survey link. So we are seeking council's input to identify stakeholders to form a community center expansion steering committee. And the purpose of this to is to carry establish momentum in bringing the kind of sense of this of a available data. So remember, we had survey, this town hall, one nineteen, information, not kind of information out there that we already, we already have. So there'll be request going to council for your recommendations for a steering committee, and that could be made up of, you know, yes, and let it be school district and from the organizations in town, you know, maybe we use it, it was probably tribe, et cetera. So Una McClendon, we felt sale facilitated between this there town hall, one nineteen, like. Common recommendations for next steps to council. So. Also, we want to settle the council retreat for twenty twenty-three, so if you haven't responded to the city board meeting for your day purposes, please do so, those three different states in March. And the council meeting and council meetings are canceled for the remainder of twenty twenty-two. The next council meeting will be starting January third, you have Monday off, Counselor say?
Don't believe councils voted to cancel the meeting, so we should.
Actually, we did early on this year, we had a calendar, we voted. In the past, we have, but we're more organized, so you will see something in January again to look at just our dates, other dates to cancel. And overall, it's been a very busy, busy year for our council and staff. I've had many workshops, and we just appreciate everyone's effort and time that took their personal lives to to be part of it. And we, you know, try to do major accomplishments, as we saw earlier on, a city administrator's line some presentation. So thank you, everyone, for your time doing that. And in several weeks, we've reinvigorated and started the new year. So with that, I think, thank city park dean and Nicole, and her community lead, Nicole, we do for being one of the smads that are still over some selling made, Nicole made snacks, so we have those. Now turn over to, I guess, are there any council leaders on reports in your meetings? Counselor one?
Yeah, just a quick one on the Snoqualmie Valley Housing Task Force. We have five committees that are meeting. It's open to anyone who's interested to see exactly what's going on. The the dates and times are posted on the website at citidataplus.com task-force. Reach out to me if you want more information. Councilmember Christiansen is involved in one of those committees, as is the mayor, and appreciate that. And and again, it's gonna be an open conversation that's gonna be ongoing. The groups have already met twice. Some are already on their third meeting this week. So a lot of great things are happening, and it's great having a lot of people involved. We have twenty people that have signed up for the committees, but there's room for more.
Thank you. Any other committee leaders on report? Right, we do have city minister Sarline, please give us a few of the primary reports.
Good evening, Your Honor again, and this is the city council, the hours late, and we have an executive session after this, so I'll attempt to be brief. And we did some highlights, starting out with our communications division. I have two words for you, and those are new website. If you have not had a time to peruse it, please do so. I personally love the fact that I could click one button and go to all of the agendas, minutes, and council packets. It's really, really slick and well defined. For our community development department, I would just note that the files to Snoqualmie Ridge Two Development Timber Trails, we have received their proposed subdivision, and the model train museum park, we got the M W U done, and we're proceeding forward on that. We will also be getting a kickoff meeting that coming up to deal with our comprehensive plan update. Or look forward to it. For our finance and the human resources department, I just note that we're starting to work with the state's audit office on lean training. And as is our annual event, we're once again gearing up for our annual state audit. So Jim and Drew will probably have more information for that as we go through. Our fire department has their usual list of statistical information, a few peruse. I would just highlight the fact that they do a great deal of ongoing training, including mental health response and through dynamics to improve the way that they work together, also medical patients. In our our IT department is continuing to work on our hardware procurement and making sure every other department has the equivalent. And our parks and public works department, Mike likes to talk a lot about snow plowing, but also would note that they're currently working with the Northwest Railway Museum Director, Richard Anderson, on two crossings at Parkway and King Street. And those are both big paper brands. There's lots of snow plowing pictures included in the package. That is Mike like snow plow. And for police, I would just note that we have two entry level police officers going through the background process. We currently have three openings for officers. So once again, chief, thank you very much for filling all of those positions for police. And that just concludes our report. We're happy to make any questions right now.
To be on, think of session, going into think of session pursuant to our study. We got 20, that 1101, I am realized to discuss litigation or legal risks of proposed action or current practice that the agency has identified with the discussion of the litigation or the legal risks likely to result in adverse legal or financial consequences in the agency. So city attorney, how much time do you anticipate and he should attend?
I would say 20 minutes, Mayor, and I would ask that the two chiefs and Ms. Ferguson attend along with myself.
I think we will take, so council will take a five minute recess and be being after the hours, the day of session. Let's see, oh, it's nine. Nine twenty and potential action is expected. So actually, we'll look here to the council. Thank you for letting me know. If you're coming back from executive session? Yeah. Backing for a council meeting? Move to approve the separation agreement and release of all things between Snoqualmie and Stephen Randall. By Councilor Christiansen and by Councilor Johnson. There's any discussion? In the, all's in favor of the eye?
Aye.
Any opposing name? So the motion passes. Move to approve the settlement and release agreement between the city of Snoqualmie, the Snoqualmie Police Association and Brady Langham. With Councilor Christiansen, second by Councilor Johnson, during the session. In that, all's in favor of the eye?
Aye.
Opposing name? Motion passes unanimously. Councilor Christiansen, move to approve the settlement and release agreement between the city of Snoqualmie, the Snoqualmie Police Association and Jason Castle.
Second.
By Councilor Christiansen, second by Councilor Johnson, in the session. All in favor of the eye?
Aye.
Any opposing name? Anything else?
Happy holidays.
Happy holiday. So give a note for the business, of course, council is very, we're entertaining a motion to adjourn.
So move?
Councilor Walton, say your name.
Second. Third.
All in favor of the eye?
Aye.
unanimous, we are adjourned. Great to be here.